To approve the budget.
Move.
Second.
Agenda.
Move the agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Mayor's report? And what, if you don't have any report?
No report.
Okay, any council reports, additional council reports? Alright, Mr. Deming.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, um, while it does pertain to the budget, there's, I don't know if you saw the pamphlet that was handed out, um, with, with the, the people that were upset with the books that were in the library or the stuff, um, I just, we can talk later if you want. I'm, I'm not concerned with the books themselves as being in the library because I don't want to participate in censorship. But, but the overdisplays, the posters in there explaining what a lesbian is and what a transgender it is in their bright pink colors, um, I, I have a huge concern with funding something that, with an institution that would present that, those ideas to children in those manners. So, um, I, I would love to talk about that before we, before we fund them and, and if, if you agree and if the council agrees that that's in poor taste, then we address that issue using our, the power of the purse.
Um, we, we will.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks, Mr. Deming. Any other council reports, Mr. Lawrence?
I just wanted to ask the question, uh, two weeks ago, we passed a resolution for all the misappropriated numbers in here. Have we corrected the general number from 2020?
What are you talking, misappropriated? What are you talking about?
How this law firm, whoever it was, CPA bunch, to correct the numbers in 2020, it was missed, as they say in here.
Actual work, I think.
Misstated. Okay, so do we have the correct numbers? Do we have to have a correct starting balance? We have that. We do not have that.
We do not have that yet. We're working on that. And that is to begin, have good beginning numbers for our 2021 audit.
Right, so I mean.
Working on it.
It, it's in construction and progress that the issue lies.
And so is this budget here. So we want to have.
No, it's not budgetary.
Well, we have to have correct numbers.
It's the planning, it's not budgetary.
It's a balance sheet transaction.
Yeah, pretty important. You know, I mean, we need to find out. I mean, we didn't pay these people to do this for nothing. So, I mean,
Well, again, they're going as fast as they can, ABL with the, in order to give, reconstruct, uh, what it should have been done by the last auditors. And that's what we're trying to correct, the beginning, the last, so they can run from that. And, and again, we've, uh, engaged them to, to do that business. And they're in the middle of it right now.
And we're to assist as well. We have a part to do and they have a part to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. But that, that's a pretty strong statement when you write a letter to you and the council, say, numbers are misstated. I mean, that's, that's pretty strong. That's, that's not easy to resolve without the correct numbers.
I, I agree, but it, it goes back for several years. It goes back for several years. The last year that I could identify that was truly correct was 2016.
Yeah, well, I just, it's something that ought to be corrected while we doing this budget. So at least to bring these numbers to true form, whatever they're supposed to be. Stay out of three million, four million, whatever. It's gotta be pretty good to be misstated. It's gotta be, of, it might be in millions of dollars. I mean, here are the numbers, guys. It's gotta be numbers.
Well, it's into numbers and it's in the balance sheet items. It's not related to the budgetary concerns. It's just a, a statement of where you were with regard to some of these figures in progress, in, uh, in construction, in, in progress, in, in sort of a, a, a continual year-to-date gain or loss is what it is. It's just a status that rep, you know, that, this role between the two budgetary revenues and expenses. It's a statement of where we are. Not a material situation to where we are in, in operation of our, you know, what we're, lays before us for the next three months or three, several weeks.
Did they give you any type of timetable when they, they're going to correct the numbers or unstated them or whatever you want to call it?
As I stated, it's a, I have to do a part and they have to do a part. And we're working on those pieces. It's not something that can be done easily. We're, we're having to look at four years of data.
I just want to make sure we have that on the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else have any comments on, on your council report? Uh, Ms. Newman, council report? Mr. Tisdale, council report?
No, no, no report.
Uh, I'll go ahead and add my council report before we get to the, uh, policy agenda. Um, but my ideas, and I'm really excited about this budget. Uh, there's a lot been going on in Biloxi Mayor and I, it's my belief that this council should consider a, to fully fund the projects that we need to fund with a very assertive outlook on our revenues. I know we want to be conservative, conservative, but we should also consider, uh, making it very assertive. Uh, we got a lot of projects that need to be funded. Uh, there's, there may be some money that's still going to come in that, uh, we can't identify, but it seems year after year, the nine years I've been doing these budgets with everyone, uh, we always usually exceed those revenue projections, which has been good. Um, and then if, if for some reason we fall slightly short, then it's, I think it's better to maybe do the budget amendments where we reduce the budget instead of the other way around, where we're increasing it. And I'm not talking about being wildly aggressive, but, you know, I, I see this initial run today and we're a little bit over 69 million. Is that what I'm looking at or am I, did I miss something on the?
At the bottom of the general fund, I think that's where you're alluding to. But let me, let me make a, a statement on being realistic and, and being able to go forward. Okay? Over the last several years, we've learned, you know, we've gotten something. Revenues over, you know, over expenses resulting in a year-to-date or ongoing fund balance that can be useful, just like revenue. To do a balanced budget, you either, the, the, you know, the pluses need to end and minuses, as, as well as the amount that you have in, in the fund balance. So what we're trying to be is realistic. We're trying to predict the future with regard to gaming especially, with regard to, uh, I think, personal, uh, property and some of the, the abolum taxes that we're gonna be, you know, increasing. And of course, the value of the mill. So what I would say is, don't be afraid to use some, you know, we're probably gonna be about an eight million dollar, I'm guessing she's gonna kick me right here, but that additional fund balance will be kicked up by about seven to eight million dollars if the smoke clears and we were predicting right on this year in three months.
And, and that increase in that general fund balance is actually unbudgeted from the previous year.
Well, not unbudgeted. It's actual differences between revenues. It's not budget, budget and, and, and year-to-date gain and losses, two different animals. And don't, I would not, you know, the creation in me, so to speak, you know, don't be afraid to, to use that gain or loss in order to move forward with those things that are important to us.
I'm with you. Okay. That, that conclude, thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report. Um, citizen comments, uh, is any, I'll open that up. Anybody here, my left, my right, in the back, citizen comments, being known, says the comments is closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. The clerk would read the topic, uh, for the po, policy agenda.
Meeting is to discuss the fiscal year 2022, 23 budget.
Alright. I have a motion. I, I don't know if we need a motion to open the discussions. Let's go ahead and open it up. Let's go. Revenues.
Okay. Well, you've got these, these pieces of paper. They're total, you know, you look at the, even the bottom line and the general fund, two things that I would note. You know, Diana, jump in. When, you know, we look at where we are, what we started the year with, where we are now, what we're projecting at the end of the year. And based on, uh, guessing, you know, and you look, the big hitters are at the top and the, the other ones string out to the bottom. Couple of things to note in this year when it comes to the bottom line is, uh, you see 74 million down at the bottom. That includes about 54, 5.4 million in AWPer, the second, uh, of the 11 million dollar entry. So you remove that from the, from the picture and then compare what we're projecting and compare what we're, uh, seeing that the 23 would be. So it's two million dollars, uh, difference. And, uh, if, some people might call it sandbagging, but I mean, it's, realistically, we've been watching things. Jerry will admit, will admit that, you know, sales tax have been outstanding for the last, how many, 16 months? Is that what we said? 15 months? And so we're hopeful that would be. But we, you know, again, May, June, July, August, September will tell the tale, uh, I think for, uh, what we're gonna do in the next FY year. So realistically, the gaming, uh, the, the sales tax are in line with what we would, what I would guess, Diana, would you would guess? And, and I think Jerry's in, in, you know, in personal property, some of these other things. But this, this represents a realistic plan to move it forward. If, you know, between now and, uh, the, the approval, uh, things drastically, uh, change maybe to the better or to the worse, uh, we can, we can make that amendment and we'll begin the year, load the budget from what we're seeing. So it's, uh, right here in front of everybody. Unless you have any specific, I think you had everything except a couple of late entries in grants that came about. So, yeah, future, uh, and they're not very, not enough commas in it to, to worry about it. So, uh, anyway, basically, we're, we're projecting about, uh, 2.5 million in what we would realize off of, uh, what we're in right now. 69 for 22 versus 67, even though that 74 million, it includes 5.4 million of, uh, grants that we won't receive right now.
So on the gaming, which is a big thing, I see the increase in, I mean, how are we projecting that 3% or, or that gain? I mean, what was the, the logic or, or how did we go about doing that?
Well, you know, we've got two critical months coming up. It, it, instead of projecting, you're talking about the difference in 22 million forecasted, right?
Where's the 21 that we're? 2023, you're at 21 million.
Right, instead of 22.
Which is a 3.3% increase.
Yeah.
Over the previous budget. Where are we coming up with that 3% increase?
Well, again, this is pure, you know, uh, Diana, uh, kind of, you know, and she coming from that, that industry and knowing what the volatilities are and the, and the drive-in and, and, uh, you know, the different things that contribute to that. Uh, you know, and, and again, these are just estimations.
Understand.
And we could estimate more and, and, but again, the estimation, the real deal that went, went comes along is gonna be where are we gonna be year-to-date gain and loss? Cause that's reflective of, you know, what the operation is. So, I mean, we could put it at $2 million more in there. And, uh, you know, if you just wanted these numbers to match these other numbers, and, but keep in mind, the way I would calculate it, these numbers and against these numbers, again, against the fund balance available to do this thing. I mean, we're not, we're, we had a, a, a pretty terrific S and P report. And, uh, and it's because, uh, I think the, the operations of the situation is we were up there about a 13.8% liquid balance, I think. So reserve, and that's reflected, that reserve is reflected in that fund balance. Okay? 10% is the requirement, I think. And, and, and if you stretch it a little bit, we're even better than that. And we're double A minus. Okay? And some of them, there was no real criticisms.
No.
No criticism at all. But we could go to even stronger than double A minus. And we, we're in the midst of figuring out who's better than us, if there's anybody, including the counties and the local municipalities. So, you know, I can go give you the report. I'll make it available. We're strong to very strong in, in assessment of S and P, S and P and, and their rating parameters. So, uh, we're in a good position to use our best judgment and to be aggressive. If, you know, if you want to be aggressive.
Can I ask a question?
Let me come back to you, Mr. Barrett, first.
I, I have a couple of quick questions. If you look at the, um, the 2002, uh, 22 year-to-date, you look down at the bottom, we're, uh, 3,695, 444. Is that current, the current number of what we are to the good as of right now?
No, this, just the revenue year-to-date.
That 3.6 million dollars is a transfer that the general fund had to give to other funds. Mainly 3.5 million of it had to go to the SURF fund to cover our insurance premiums.
That's a transfer.
It's a transfer.
Alright, okay, gotcha. So the number, so the tran, same thing at the bottom. So this, 2 million, so if you go two columns over to the, um, forecast.
Right.
Looking at those two numbers, that's the same thing, the 6,195, 444.
Right. I'm expecting in 23, we're gonna have to fund the SURF fund again for another $2 million to cover insurance.
The proceeds of the note, 2,300,028, uh, 3,000, 328,000.
The 3 million, that's for three fire trucks that were ordered this year that won't be received till next year. So it's being moved from 22 to 23. And then we're also, um, going to do a lease purchase for one ladder truck. So those two figures add to that 3 million.
So if, if we, if we go to the fiscal year 2022 forecasted revenue, um, what will we be moving forecasted at the end of the, the year, um, over? Like, what will be our, our surplus? What's, what's that, what's that estimate?
Huge amount. Our revenue over expenses, what may go to from 22 to 23. When we did it with S and P, we're forecasting anywhere from maybe seven to nine.
Seven to nine million dollars.
Year-to-date gain and loss for the general fund operations combined.
Okay, seven to nine. Now, can you give me a, um, a, a date on, um, so seven to nine million dollar over? And then can you give me a date on when we get the, the reports for July? What, generally, the net following month or whatever, when do we get the reports for the revenue for the previous month from the casinos? Or, or for two months?
I don't get the, I get the money by, but I don't get reports from the casino. I think those go to you and Stacey.
When will we get that? So right now, we know what we've brought in. Up to what point?
Well, for June, we know that game, gross gaming revenue was like 97 million dollars.
Okay. So we can calculate what we're gonna get off of that?
June, alright. June business, that was critical. May and June were critical and they both exceeded what we had guessed from last year. Last year being the record year.
Okay, so what, um, what day of the month? So in, in August, when, around, when do we get that?
Probably about the 10th.
About the 10th of August. So same thing going forward, um, for August, September, we'll get it September 10th to 15th, something like that. Okay. That's the only questions I have for now.
Mr. Lawrence?
I was just wondering, uh, up on, uh, projected 2023 budget, why'd you drop the million dollars, 678,000 in the gaming? You got a negative 678. That's the top line.
The 678 is, is a over, right? Over of the, uh,
Yeah, it's more.
What we projected in 22, October 1. Okay? That's the 678 over the top of that, isn't it?
Yes, you have 22 million and then you go to a, to a 23 budget, you're projecting 21 million.
Okay, you.
678, negative 678.
No, it's not negative. It's positive. You're talking about the original difference between FY '22, original budget, which is for gaming rev, gaming tax, right?
Right.
22, 20 million, 321. This was in 10-1. Okay? We, we revised it up as we went through. So the forecast is gonna be 22, oh, 86.
Right.
Okay? But we, we, uh, again, added six, 600, to make that 22, uh, guess and best guess going forward.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you went up to 22 projected.
From October 1, 22.
Right.
21 to where we are.
So why'd you, I know you went up from the 22.
I mean, right, I mean.
Why did you use the 22 million again?
We just, we'd use our best guess on what, where we need to be. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's easy to throw it another million, but it's still a guess. And, and, you know, again, at the wise we're getting, as, as Councilman Barrett was, was saying, you know, as we refine this and, and we, we look at things, revenues against the expenses, you know, and we've always, if, really, you know, pretty much all the time looked at, well, we can be a little bit more aggressive with this figure because we, we feel better about it right now. But this is our best guess at this point in time. I mean, you know, I wouldn't, and I don't think Diana had a heart, a heart attack either if we put 22 million in it again. But, uh, it's just a guess.
Would it be a problem to put it equal to what we're projecting this year to project that next year?
I, I think it would be a problem if we, if we projected 20, 20, uh, forecasted 22 at 22. Um, I mean, literally, I don't think we'd be mistating any, you know, projections.
Y'all okay with that? Putting the gaming revenue the same as what we're projecting at the end of this year?
Numbers to me to, to figure out what you was doing and just adjusting what you would. 22 to 23, I'd go from, would you revise budget to the projected budget? That's what I was looking at. I was just saying, some of this stuff, sale taxes, man, that's a pretty good increase in sale taxes. Where'd that come from? What, did we put on, like, some of these, uh, seven-year deals, are they on the table now? Like, the Hard Rock.
No, not, not sales tax. Sales tax is generated from.
That, well, that could be said. Cause they, they pay free money for seven years and some of these things are coming off the table now. They'll be on the, on our book. So we should be gaining whatever taxes you want to call it.
Well.
We're giving them that seven years, 100% tax break. When have we done the Hard Rock in the two or three?
No, that's our, that, that's our abolum taxes and some of those other, I mean.
I mean, all that should be, some of those.
Yeah, we're, we're, in, in talking with those properties that, uh, abatements have run out and Jerry and, uh, they pay attention and that's, oh, right. And that's what, and that's reflective in our personal property and in our real property, I think, in projections, right? Well, we, we're talking about an increase in assessed valuation of about 3%. Is that what, what they told you? Nope. Two point something, yeah. But that's all reflective in the, in these, these hitters up here with, uh.
I'm just trying to get, I know, uh, just trying to get an update on them things. I know we've done, here lately, we're doing the five years, 50%. But that's just, there'll be a gain for, originally, seven years, 100%. And I don't know if there's any of them left anymore.
I bet it. Not many is what he said.
So, I mean, I knew, yeah. So that, that'd be plus. Like, that big hotel thing in Hard Rock, if they're fully online, that's, that's huge money compared to getting nothing.
Well, again, what Diana and, and the tax assessor, they give her the indication of this, the total dollar assessed valuation going up that we apply the millage to. And that, these are these figures that was cal, that she calculated.
I know you give it, I, I think of it last year, you gave us a list and one of those years was expiring. Could you revise that list and give it back to us?
Who's going off the tax roll, or off the abatement, back on the tax roll. But what I'm saying, that those numbers are included in this, this thing. Those are all reflective in what assessor sends her as far as what you apply the millage to.
She already had those in?
Yeah, yeah, that's included, yeah.
We had about 12 million more come to real property in assessed value this current year for 23.
Yeah, we, all this stuff, the abolum taxes up, I was just wondering, all these things that take an effect, it's gonna benefit the city.
Right.
I, I believe the only one that's still outstanding, I actually thought it was only Community Bank.
Yeah, Community's on here.
Actually, it may be two, cause there's one at 500 and there's one at a million yet.
Right. Right. How many did you say, Jerry?
Yeah. And, and let me clarify this for people at home too. In the past, you know, in, in the old days, if you, and we hit some clarification, and the, and the appraisers for the assessor, that you see these homes, especially now, going on the, you know, sale for 300, 400,000 dollars. It wasn't necessarily what had reached the tax rolls for. But then we've got a commitment that you can, we can plan on about 85% of that sales tax going to the tax roll. Instead of saying for a $300,000 house that you pay, you, you, your improvement is gonna be not 100,000, but 85% of the 300,000. So that's an improvement in position in the, that abolum outlook. I mean, we've got how many, uh, subdivisions, about 300 homes in place right now. And they're not gonna be selling for under 200,000. So that position that you're planning, that we, we'll be rolling on, not this year, but when they, you know, you got a year after it goes. But that's the long play, is where we're trying to, you know, that abolum number will be, uh, reflected, you know, as these things come online. But the commit, the, the big, the takeaway is, it's the, the assessed value, the true value and then the assessed value, 10 or 15%, depending on whether you're a renter or not, is gonna be, you know, generate better numbers, more realistic numbers so we can plan.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, you got anything else?
Yeah, there's, um, the use tax rebate.
Yep.
Got in, uh, in 23, you got another meeting.
1.3, we got another, another hit coming, I think.
There's a million dollars you got listed in here.
Yeah, it has to be. And, and there's a lot of string, yeah, million three is what we have so far right now.
Right. And that's also what we budgeted last year.
Budgeted last year.
And we're projecting 2.3 and we're budgeting 2.3.
Well, yeah, you got, yeah, it was 1.3. Now you got 2.3. And you're projecting 2.3, additional million. So there's an additional million dollars you're getting. Where's that million coming from?
From the use tax, which is the tax in and out tax that's diverted to us. And only 15% of, with that every dollar you pay in use tax is diverted, not 18.5 like sales tax, 15, and then with strings. And the strings being, we've got to use that in infrastructure. And that's what we're doing.
Yep. And then there's another one, this, uh, other grant, SAF, A U R.
That's our real fund, yeah.
What is that? That's another million dollars, 38, million 38? What does that, that's a grant we getting for hiring who? Or what does that mean?
It's a safer grant, yeah, yeah.
Safer grant.
That's new for 23. We thought we would start this year in 22, but most likely it won't start till October.
Till we had that money?
It, it just got approved. Oh, it's not, did it not get, okay. It, it's gonna be approved shortly.
And that's a million 38.
Correct. And that's for 15 firefighters.
Okay. So that's what, that's a good. For sure. Yep, one time. And then that one, I'm trying to be at the prior year taxes. Is, is this old tax money? What did that mean, prior year taxes?
Prior year taxes, if, if people collecting taxes in 21 or 22, that they collect, you know, if they, over a year, that goes into that revenue stream. You know, there's gonna be a tax sale in August, right? People won't be paying that maybe till, to 23. And that would be a prior year collection, prior to, uh, uh, that year.
What is the recovery? There's, there's 423,000.
Recovery?
Covers.
That could, it's various things. It could be insurance proceeds. It could be, um, like, we just closed down the PCDC and we transferred the money into here.
Well, I know you had like 250.
It, it sits an unknown at the beginning of the year. We have no clue what will come into that figure.
That's a good thing. I'm correct, alright. Just double checking that. On, on the B mail, it looks like we, we, uh, losing 11, 11,000. I'm surprised. Who, who does, uh, advertising for that? For the B mail?
You know, uh, again, in, you know, the, our public affairs is actually, you know, actually looking for the ads that go off, you know, to, to be part of that deal. So we do it.
I mean. Well, I'm, I'm saying, when you deliver 15,000 households every month, that'll be buying ads in that book, everybody. I mean, that's huge.
Well, I mean.
You go to every house, every month. I mean, that should be the easiest sale I got. I mean, I don't know who does that. Do you have, or they just do it?
Yeah, Cecilia and Keith went advertising.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's 15,000 homes every month. And nobody does that. I mean, you can't beat that. I mean, that should, that book should be thick.
We'll work out a commission deal if you want to.
I'm just saying, that's a, that should be an easy sell. I mean, that's 15,000. I mean, that's.
Ground floor.
Well, this, this, here's my favorite. This is Robert Deming's personal thing. Short-term rental, $34,000. What is, where'd that come from?
Fees, short-term rental fees.
Um, I work with Jerry Creel to get how many licenses we have. And there is a renewal fee as well as an occupancy fee. And how many license we have issued, we just multiply across that.
So this is just, uh, the, the fees for the, for donor? I was just wondering.
Just, just make the check out to Robert Deming, D E.
34,100. Mr. Deming. You know, it looked like we did quite well with our cemetery plots.
We did.
That's all, that's all the else profit, well, our property.
They sold a few this year.
Are they all sold? We still have a bunch left?
No, there's still some available.
And, uh, I guess I have to ask Deming different too. Deming, you must have donated 2,000 from the 34,000. So what is the donation? Who gave us $2,000? What is that?
I can neither confirm nor.
I can neither confirm nor deny.
I thought maybe you gave him something back, I didn't know.
No one's given us anything yet. That's just a budgeted figure. Something could come in, it may not.
George, uh, Councilman Demming had a question.
Sure, go ahead.
For the mayor.
I wasn't finished, but that's okay.
We'll come back to you.
I mean, I'm sure you have something to say about it. Uh, with the new medical marijuana going into affect, all the cultivation licensing, I know the state takes that money, is there any consideration for the cities? How, how does that funding come back to us?
I think it's a, of the seven, of the twelve that's supposed to be, uh, collected, it's a diversion, seven percent of that will be eighteen point five coming back. So it's like an additional retail outlet.
So it, so that we get the eighteen point five off the twelve?
Of the seven.
Only the seven, not the twelve?
Not, not the twelve.
So it's just a sales tax benefit, that's all?
But do you need to create a category for marijuana? Marijuana revenue?
They, they, all the check that they send us back.
Yeah, they don't differentiate, we would know, we would-
It's just sales tax?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, we didn't really forecast a lot of that.
We did not.
We did not forecast, so that may be something. Of course, I don't know, it, it won't be until Jan, till- That's all right.
So, so if I'm hearing some of the, some of the banner back and forth as we look through these revenue projections, we're comfortable bumping up the gaming tax, uh, revenue projection, another million, that gives us a little over seventy million to work with in this budget? Mayor, are you okay with that as a
Yeah, yeah.
Starting point to, kind of, that, that's where we start with our budget, seventy million?
Yep.
And then, and then we start getting into the expenses. Um, does anybody else wanna add anything on this revenue? I mean, this is the top, top line, and then we get into the meat and potatoes at, in our subsequent meetings with expenses and projects. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I appreciate everybody's patience. First of all, I just wanna say, Diana, you been here how long?
Less than two years.
Less than two years, and still has a sense of humor and hustles and works art. I will just, I wanna compliment her and her staff on that. Um, and I'm gonna refer to my questions by accounting order, so they're easier to find. On, uh, one forty-three, it says recoveries, and, and, and these first few questions, I'm just not sure what the terms mean. I'm not sure what recoveries means there.
Recoveries is anything that doesn't fall into another category, so it could be an insurance, if, if someone hits a police car.
So it's odds and ends?
Yeah, it's, it's on, right.
Okay, um, let's see. Accounting order one twenty, public facilities, community development. I'm not-
Tell me that one again.
It's, uh, accounting order one twenty, says public facilities, community development.
What's, what's the number? What's, what's the dollar figure? It's easier for us. Over a hundred thousand?
Accounting order number one twenty.
We don't have that format. You're using a format that is email, yes, so we don't have those numbers.
All right, um, accounting order-
Tell me what the forecasted revenue is for twenty-three.
Uh, yeah, for, you want the forecasted, I've got the projected revenue, it's a hundred thousand?
Okay. That Homeland Security, G R one-one-one?
No, it wasn't a grant, I don't think.
That's the only hundred thousand I have.
Okay.
G R one-one-one?
All right, I'm looking at fiscal year projected twenty-twenty-three. It's all, I can get with you later on that. On accounting order number fifteen, utility tax, twenty-one dash thirty-three dash two point-
The amount, yeah.
If I'm looking-
Revenue twenty-three, what do you have?
Utility tax.
Fifty-five thousand.
There's a section of taxes that we get from Centerpoint or Mississippi Power. This utility tax falls in that category.
Franchise related?
It's from a utility, yeah. I think it's all the telephone ones.
All right, and then on, uh, counting order one oh five, special assessments?
Special assessments are what are, um, assessed through the council meeting where we clean up people's lands.
Gotcha.
And then the courthouse collects it when they pay taxes, and Jerry has done a very good job. We've gone from zero percent to like eighty-five to ninety-five percent for the past two, three years.
Well, thank you for that. Do you think he can do better? I'm kidding, okay. So the, the, while we're, I'm at accounting order one, one-ten, that's community court fines, and I, and I attend those, and as I recall, there are some issues, and we might need to look at revising some ordinances. Uh, I think so, that's a, that's a Peter Abyad note, uh, capably substituted by Jane Minarty today. Then, um, accounting order one, one hundred, recreation special, it's just a small sum, five thousand, and I'm not quite sure what the special part is for special.
It's like a camp or something through parks, yeah.
Good enough, all right. Um, next thing, we were talking about short-term rentals briefly, and, um, to get a permit for a short-term rental, which is done annually, has to be renewed, that's a hundred dollars, Jerry, is it? And then there was something else that was collected in occupancy, I- Gotcha. So just looking at the projection figures, um, you're anticipating what, maybe another hundred? Roughly a hundred units or thereabouts, a hundred, a hundred and twenty? Right, right. So anyway, and my, my, my point being that we're looking at a sizable increase in number, we anticipate, we're guessing, our best guess is, you know? Okay, um, do we have a feel for how much we have saved in personnel costs this year due to the vacancies that we've not filled? Do you have an idea of what that might be? I mean, I'm just eyeballing it based on the doc, and it looks like, I don't know, one and a half million, give or take. I know this comes out of the blue, you may not have a figure.
Place, you know, I, I think we were projecting one point one million that we comfortably change from the budget. Now, this is not gonna be, you know, actual versus real. This is actually, I could transfer from about one point one million, I'm thinking, from those vacancies to contractual services, to deliver that this year, this FY year.
All right, so-
I think one point one-
But it'll be used to provide those services.
Absolutely.
Or, or the bulk of it, anyway. And then in gaming, we have exceeded projections by roughly a couple of million dollars at this point.
Yeah.
And we hope the good times continue to roll.
The projected revenues.
Okay.
We're projecting, uh, yeah, twenty-two.
All right, I, I think that's all I have, thank you. Anyone else?
I just, just got a follow-up. On the, follow-up about the community, why'd you drop the thirty thousand? You got a negative thirty thousand, and you dropped it to fourteen five, from forty-five thousand? On the, the court fines, it was just not collect that much money on.
Court fine, four point five, fourteen point five.
Last year was the first year when we had community court, and we didn't know how to budget it, so we kinda estimated to see where it would be. So this year, when we're forecasting twenty-three, we're doing it more off of trends.
The, the fourteen five should fit in line?
Mm-hmm.
And on the, on the, the bottom, we got other grants, we took out that five million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that's the second half of the AWPA grant.
Right.
We're not getting that again.
You took that out of the, the, on the back end, and we put in two thousand, two million, thirty-eight thousand, where'd that come from?
Two different animals. This is the, the, the two million on the, uh, other.
We took out the five, five, which affects the bottom line, but, but you put in, you're getting another two million from somewhere. Two million, thirty-eight thousand, ninety-two.
That, that's a transfer now.
That's not two million thirty-eight.
These all in the transfers.
This is it. Now, two million you're talking about under the forecasted number, right? In FY twenty-three, forecasting, or?
Yeah, we don't, the, the- Yeah, you got, uh, like last year, we did the five, now you got two point four million. I don't know about this new sheet, I'm going on the big sheet, and you got a negative four million, seventy-six thousand. That's the last line, the rise budget for twenty-twenty-two. It comes down to negative four seventy-six.
Are you, are you looking at this page right here?
I said, I can hardly read these numbers. That's why I was using this sheet you give me. You know, and this one is like three point eight. On this sheet, it was four point oh seven six. It's two point eight five, so what was the bigger difference in that? Now, this sheet here was four million. And if from here, right, no, that's what I said, so it sits right here. And that's what it was on the other sheet.
Right.
So this is two, yeah, right.
This is the one.
So what'd make that change so much? What changed?
Two point five eight eight, is that what you're saying in general fund? It changed to two point eight zero?
Right, negative, yeah, two point, so- On the transfer, there's always a transfer, is that correct?
All right. I, I think I can sum it up. Uh, you got any other questions, you know, on the revenue?
We're gonna have to come back.
I, I, I think we can sum it up, I, you know, if, I think we can all agree, you, you, this budget was sixty-eight, three eighty-six. If y'all can find a way to increase that, in primarily the increase in the gaming, and in finding, uh, maybe what's reasonable to get that to seventy million, then that can be our starting number, and then we can work with that when we go into the real meat and potatoes of the expenses and projects. Does that sound reasonable? Does everybody agree with that?
Sounds good to me.
Everybody agree? We don't need a motion or anything, do we?
We're gonna kick it up one million for additional, so we're gonna be twenty-two million is what we're forecasting for revenue, and that's gonna kick it up a million, I don't know. But there may be some other things that'll happen between now and then, if you don't have our next revenue. We can revisit revenue as we do expenses.
All right.
And we'll give you a, an updated figure.
Fair enough, fair enough. You got any other questions, Mr. Lawrence, on any of the minute stuff? Mr. Lawrence has one more. We do have a time limit in this workshop, so go ahead. I mean, Mr. Tisdale?
We'll bring anything else back.
One question, could I, could I get a clean copy of this, a PDF copy of this, if somebody will send it to me, just, so I can spread the gospel and make other cities jealous? Thank you, sir.
Done. A motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen, women.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna keep meeting after the meeting.
Do we what?
Can we have a meet, we're gonna have a meet after the budget.
I, I think that'd be a good format, but let me get with them to make sure about-
Can we hear, you know?
Why not?